Excellent, so I'll call this meeting to order. We're now meeting as committee of the whole council. Is there any declaration of interest to community or otherwise? Seeing none, I would ask you again to declare if one comes up during the course of the meeting. We're on to item number three, business arising from the minutes. Counselor Desai, I know that you had you withdrawn your notice of motion with respect to electoral reform, but we can move on to item B and your notice of motion that was provided regarding exam mental health. You have the floor. Do you want to move it? So moved by Counselor Desai, seconded by Counselor Robinson. She got you beat by just a bit there, Counselor. Campbell. Milne. The brain is not working today, folks.
Did you want to order lunch or what were you?
At least it's not Carlton and Kevany anymore. Counselor decide.
Thank you, Warden X. The notice of motion itself is pretty self-explanatory. All I'd like to say on this is the job we do, it's changed significantly, especially since the advent of social media. There's increased scrutiny, which I'm all for, but at the same time, there's also an avenue for people to make attacks on our characters. Keeping this in mind and the increased focus on mental health, it is important that the county offer coverage for mental health supports to members of council. I'm also extremely proud to announce that the municipality of Gray Highlands unanimously passed a similar motion to provide coverage for its council members. And my hope is that I can get that same level of support here today and that other lower tiers in Gray County will also follow suit on this because at the end of the day, mental health is very important to the job that we do. Thank you, Warden X.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and I want to wholeheartedly endorse the notice of motion. I know it's, you know, some people will look at this and say, well, you signed up for the job, suck it up, buttercup. But the thing is, it's not just us. It affects our families and those around us. So I do believe that there is some need for some support at times because we, as Counselor Desai said, we do come under a lot of scrutiny and rightly so, but at times that scrutiny can cross the line into, well, I won't say what the word is, but we all know what that is. But we could use some support at times, so I wholeheartedly endorse the notice of motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Milne. Comments from anyone else? Seeing none, and perhaps I will call the question is, I keep going to the opposed, all those in favor. Anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Thank you very much. Our guest is not expected until 10:45, so perhaps we take a short break and come back at 10:45 unless the guest is here. Why don't we do that? We'll take a short break. Sorry. Oh, true. Yes, we can do the consent. Why don't we do that then? So with the old item number five and the consent agenda, is there anything in that list that needs to be pulled? Seeing none, I'm gonna ask for a mover, please, to approve the consent agenda. Moved by Counselor Burley, seconded by, well, I did see the deputy warden first, so sorry. Anyone, sorry, all those in favor? Is there anyone opposed? That is Carrie. Also, compass, I promise I'll get you next. Okay. So why don't we do that then? Because maybe we shouldn't get into the business or do you want to do that? What is your preference? People want to get into the business or take a timeout, short timeout? Okay, so we'll come back at 10:45. Okay, oh, he's just right. Okay, so we are back and we have a delegation from Mr. Trevor Graham talking about speeding concerns on Gray Road 32. Mr. Graham, you have the floor.
Good morning. Thank you for this opportunity, Warden and members of council, to express to you not only my concerns, but the concerns of my neighbors about the speed limit and the traffic pattern on Gray Road 32. I just want to take five or 10 minutes this morning. I apologize in advance. My intent is not to walk you through the 31-page presentation that I sent to you. But the reason in sending you that level of detail was to show to you that we're trying to present this in as factual, non-emotional way as possible. So if I could just maybe have that first map brought up, maybe just a bit of a backgrounder here for folks. Gray Road 32 is a 9.3 kilometer. There we go.
Mr. Graham, you're welcome to take your mask off if you like while you're speaking. I can hear you, yes. Okay.
Am I okay? It's a 9.3-kilometer connector road between Highway 10 and Gray Road 30, Gray Road 30 being at the top of this map. The two dots at the top of the page are a recent change to the speed limit on Gray Road 32, which I believe council dealt with this past summer where the speed limit has been reduced to 50 kilometers per hour and on the rest of Gray Road 32, the posted speed limit is 70. And my area of concern in particular today is the area between the two red dots where the posted speed limit is 70, but the suggested speed limit is 50. Now, the problem with this map is you don't see the elevation changes that take place between each of these respective points. When I first took on this task of reviewing the traffic patterns, I was predominantly concerned with the traffic going west to east. And yet, in my investigations, I found out that the traffic actually going east, and when I say east, it's actually northeast to west, was actually worse. So maybe if we go to the next map, it can show you in a little bit better detail, which I think is on page 21, if it comes up. So this is primarily the area of concern and the red dot is really the primary that I've been focused on. So the traffic coming from west from Highway 10 north to Gray Road 30 travels at an average speed of 79.8 kilometers per hour. This is as they approach that 90-degree corner. The traffic coming north to west from Gray Road 30 to Highway 10 is traveling at an average speed of 86.6. Now, this was all done through a radar gun purchased on Amazon. As again, the posted speed limit 70, the suggested speed limit is 50, and yet the average speeds of cars and vehicles on this road are nowhere near that limit. 13% of all vehicles coming from Gray Road 30 to Highway 10 are over 90 kilometers an hour with a top speed measured of 106. There was not one vehicle in all the measurements that I made going from 30 to 10 that even did the posted speed limit. Never mind the suggested speed limit. I'd ask you to keep in mind two things. These are all types of vehicles. These are not only cars, SUVs. These are 53-foot transfer, transport trucks. These are cement trucks. These are school buses. These are UPS delivery vehicles. And again, just a reminder, the three green dots on that map are horse farms. This road is not only used by vehicles, it's used by pedestrians, it's used by cyclists, it's used by horse-drawn carriage, it's used by farm equipment, and it's used actually by horses who actually walk up and down this road. So the two issues that spin out of this speed on Gray Road 32 is 21% of all vehicles tracked coming down the road from Gray Road 30 to Highway 10 through this corner, 21% of them pass over the center line. Now, that may just be them making an adjustment to make the corner because they see that nobody's coming. But at the end of the day, there have been incidents where people are too far over the road and the others coming the other way have to make an adjustment. The second issue is as they come through the corner, because they've recognized possibly too late that the corner is there and they slow down, they all then speed up as they come out of the corner and they're actually speeding up in the most heavily populated area of Gray Road 32. So if you look to the left of that red dot, you know, there's 11 residents between that red dot and East Back Line. When I canvassed my neighbors to ask for their support for this ask of council, I was told of a number of stories of pets being killed, drivers and cars ending up on people's front lawn. There were three specific incidents of that, I believe, in the last three years. And more importantly, the number of near misses as individuals pull in and out of their driveway. The two yellow dots that were, sorry, you can just kind of see three yellow dots there on that map. If you were to go from left to right on each of those yellow dots, those are hills. And what you're finding is given the speed of vehicles as they go up and over these hills, there are a number of blind spots. Now, folks, physics was not my strength in school and I'm not going to pretend to be a physics expert, but here's the issue. If you, and I'm sorry, there are two stick-it notes on that map, one of which is folded over, but on either side of that red dot, there's about a five-second clearance at 70 kilometers an hour as you come around that corner before you hit a driveway. If traffic is doing 70, they can stop in time. However, traffic studies show that it takes the average person two and a half seconds, A, one second to realize that they have to stop, and one and a half seconds with which to make that transition to stopping. So of the five seconds available to them, two and a half seconds is recognition. Again, if they're doing the posted, even the posted 70, they can make that stop. However, given the average speeds of people are coming into this corner, there's no way at an average speed of 86 kilometers an hour, they can make that transition if perchance somebody's coming in and out of their driveway. Now, here's where I lose it on the physics end, okay? Any of these stats that I've given you, take no consideration into road conditions, the elevation or inclination of the hill, the weight of vehicles. Because again, if a vehicle is twice the weight of an average car, it takes twice as long to stop as it does that car. So given some of the vehicles that are coming down this road, there's no ability for them to stop with these respective blind spots. So it's clear to me, it's clear to my neighbors, hopefully we've made it clear to you that there is an issue waiting to happen at the bottom of this corner. And basically, we have two asks of council. One is honestly validate our issue. Double-check to make sure that what we're telling you is actually the case. In all honesty, if anybody were to stand there for one hour, I guarantee you they would walk away with the same revelation that we have. The deputy mayor last November was there for a period of maybe 10 to 15 minutes, and I even think at that time he was a little bit of gas at the traffic going by and the speeds they were traveling at. Secondly, if you support or you agree with what our findings are, then we're asking for some type of action to be taken. I know these things aren't easy. I know you can post speeds and people don't follow them, but at the end of the day, I think we have to make some type of effort. So we basically have a four-part ask. One is to reduce the speed limit from East Back Line up to the top of the hill, which I believe is a 1.8-kilometer stretch to 50 kilometers per hour. Second, we're asking for a four-way stop to be put in at East Back Line and Gray Road 32. It currently is a two-way stop running north-south. It is not a two-way stop east-west. The reason for that ask is we're hoping by putting a stop sign in that, A, because traffic have to stop going west to east, the inclination then will not to be speed up as they approach this corner. And B, coming the other direction, they know there's a stop sign coming and there's really no reason to gun it to get out of the corner and approach Highway 10. Thirdly, and I know this one comes with a cost, but we are looking for some type of signage, flashing signage that would hopefully show the speed of people going down the hill relative to the speed at which they're supposed to be traveling. Without 24-hour enforcement, which is ridiculous, I do believe people, as evidenced throughout other areas of the county, when they see these signs telling them how much they're breaking the law by, most people at least slow down somewhat, whether or not they slow down to the respective speed, but at least they do slow down. And lastly, we're asking for some level of enforcement. I appreciate that labor for police is an issue and that there's a ton of other priorities. But unfortunately, there's even locals that blow through this corner and I think it's important that they understand that even if it was once a month for three or four hours, that there was some level of police enforcement in this area. That's my pitch. I'm open to any questions if you have them, and again, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Graham. I'll turn to council. Are there any questions? Is that pre-warden?
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and thanks, Trevor, for bringing us forward. I know, you and I spoke on the phone last year and I know this has been an issue that you've raised more than once and I want to remind, just in a sense of similarity to this and I know back in my first term of county council, I'm going to say about 2013, 14, there was a similar situation that was on Gray Road 1. I'm not sure Pat remembers that. It was when a previous director was here. And it was a delegation came to council with regards to a sharp ban on Gray Road 1. I'm sure you missed him earlier. Patterson knows that, or Carrollton, but there was a spot where there was a sharp ban, similar to the same points that you're raising about a sharp ban and concerns of, of traffic flying off the road, so to speak, as I remember the quote was back then, and I can't remember the delegation that came. But at the end of the day, I know we, as county council did, as a county council, did reduce that speed in that particular area because of the sharpness in the bin, and I know there was a number of accidents and different things that had been brought forward at that time. So I guess my point, just in general to you, Mr. Warden, is I know that sometimes when, from my experience, I've seen that before and we've been something about that just because of the concern in the community and that area. Certainly, I'm sure as you're yourself, Trevor, that you living there, you witnessed that and I certainly take what you're bringing forward to us to heart and thank you for spending the time and doing what you've done. So I guess moving forward, I guess at some time, Mr. Warden, and I guess whether that through you, Madam Clerk, whether that we need a notice of motion or how we move forward with some follow-up direction on this and verifying. direction on this and verifying, uh, I guess like the one question I do have through Mr. Warden to our director. Um, do we have, I know we have traffic counters. And I know some of them do measure speed in the type of vehicle. So I just want to verify, do we have that technology that will do the speed and measure the vehicles in time of day? So through you, Mr. Warden, to our director, if that's possible.
Mr. Hoy.
Is it on now? Okay. Yeah, through you, Mr. Warden. Yes, we are. We do record traffic counts that were, like you said, Paul records the speed and the type of vehicle, the time of day, et cetera. So uh, we have all that data. The one, the one thing I would uh, say to Mr. Graham, and I thank you for coming here today. Um, we don't dispute his data. We know there's speeding issues there. Um, I think where where we disagree is just maybe on the solution. I don't know if you if you kind of want me to go into talking in some more detail about this, or if we bring it back in a future report, or like we do our speed report every year, that'll probably be in about January. I don't know if you want it brought back. I think we've addressed this area before um, through that report. Uh, but I could speak for a little bit now or whatever you would prefer.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so basically, um, like I said, let me thank Mr. Graham. I understand this is pretty common for us. People are very concerned about speeders in their area where they live. Speeding is very, very widespread. Uh, but we go by our policy. We adhere to that policy. Uh, the current policy, uh, the goal of it is to make an appropriate speed in a road in question. It really is not to control speeding. Because I think when I look back at traffic complaints or speeding complaints, say, you know, five years ago, we'd have about seventy-year speeding complaints. Now we get over thirty per year. So people are very concerned about speeding and and during the pandemic especially, people are a little more sensitive, people are home, people are speeding more, it seems like. And and to the the credit of people that are very concerned about speeding in their area, it doesn't stop at a complaint. So they make a complaint and we go through our policy and and we say, oh, the posted speed is appropriate. And it doesn't stop there. You keep, you know, people that are very upset about speeding are very adamant that it needs to be changed, and then it comes all the way eventually up to this level, which is, which is their their right to do so. But typically, what we find, um, same as most uh, presentations and notes we get. There's a basic flaw in a lot of them in that. Um, you know, it's it's everybody's speeding, it's posted seventy, everybody's going eighty, so it should be fifty. So if, you know, the basic uh, kind of counterintuitive thing is people aren't following the science seventy, they're not going to fall out at fifty. Like, that is just unfortunately, uh, until there's a cultural shift, you know, in North American driving, that just seems to be the way it is. And I just wanted to bring up something, uh, as we recently had with seventeen B, not to muddy the picture, I know this is about thirty-two. Um, but that, you know, on our policy where we said seventeen B and that one area is supposed to be a sixty, and we did a bunch of traffic data. And then we did a bunch once it got changed to fifty. So this is not a controlled experiment because we paved the road in between. So there's always probably that little bit of, uh, people love kind of zipping along a newly paved road. So it does kind of muddy the picture a bit that way. But the traffic counts we did before on seventeen B, when it was sixty and when it was fifty, the average speed went up from sixty-five and a half to sixty-six. Uh, the eighty-fifth percentile speed, uh, went, which eighty-five percent of traffic is going below that, went from seventy-three to seventy-five. Obviously, the percent of speeders went up because it went from seventy-four to ninety-six, just because we lowered the speed limit, and people are going the same speed, basically, everybody's speeding. And then actually, the car volume went up as well. So it, you know, again, school started, it wasn't going before, there might be issues there, but it just, it shows our frustration too. That it's really hard to control, uh, what people are are going to drive. And um, just to to give a bit of background, we had lowered the speed on one nineteen and thirty-two. Uh, after construction, we had lowered it to sixty for a while. We've learned quite about, bit about speed posting since two thousand eighteen, but that was the most calls we ever got. Um, people were really, really angry in that area that speed was lowered. They feel comfortable driving seventy, or obviously, they feel comfortable driving about eighty-five, but they didn't want to slow it down. Um, people weren't adhering to it. It just seemed, you know, we were just kind of wasting our time. So um, we marked it back up on one nineteen and on sixty and on thirty-two. Um, now there is some areas, the areas of concern, we've left a warning sign. Um, of course, you can't get a ticket on a warning sign for the speed, the same as on a, same as on a ramp going on to the, you know, on the four hundred or something. It tells you, you shouldn't be going eighty on that ramp. It's not necessarily posted speed, it's usually a warning sign. Just to tell you, this is kind of what this curve is designed for. You should slow it down. So one thing I just wanted to talk about very briefly is just, um, and you might not all be aware, but we we're in two groups, uh, to stop stunt driving because it's such an epidemic, especially it started in the peninsula, basically. But there's a group, uh, from Fleischer to Wyerton and then a group from Wyerton North. So that group includes, uh, the OPP, Peel is involved, MTO, United Way, uh, public health is involved, there's some health professionals, uh, like from Windsor and Sarnia involved. And it's trying to stop stunt driving. And we hadn't had a lot of success till this year. Apparently, it's dropped stunt driving charges are down about fifty percent. But it was just, it was such a multi-pronged attack, like it was, it was increased enforcement. Um, even they did, you know, they're doing, uh, plane monitoring in the peninsula now. Very severe penalties, very, very severe penalties for stunt driving. They've all been bumped up. There's a lot of signage posted on the route. Uh, there was even a, we even did a Facebook campaign targeting people specifically that were driving from Peel to Toba Moray, for example. So it was coming up on their phone. And and one thing we had had a big talk with MTO about is, uh, there's different ways to convince people to stop speeding, I guess. It seems like we, we seem to have some success with going with the bottom line that we're taking your car, we're taking your license, and you're not getting it back for thirty days. The whole someone could get killed. I don't know if it's the, you know, uh, the feeling that youth are are invulnerable or whatever it is, it didn't seem to have the effect of putting it in their pocket. This is going to cost you five thousand or ten thousand dollars and your car is going to be gone. So I, I just feel like it's almost like we need a culture change somehow, and it's bigger than Gray County, it's bigger than Ontario, probably. And until that happens, it's hard for us to just pick kind of random outliers where people are concerned about speed, because people are literally are concerned about speed everywhere and just have a bunch of little roads that don't adhere to our policy. It just creates a problem because then the other people want to know, well, why isn't mine? Or why, maybe somebody does a better presentation. I mean, not every presentation has as much data as this one does. And like I command Mr. Graham on how much data is in here, like, there's a lot of work going on here. And uh, and it's valid work. It's just, um, I'm afraid if, you know, we start just randomly lowering speeds based on single requests, um, even from a group, really. Because everyone wants to speed down in their area, but they don't want it, they don't want it down when they're driving somewhere. So that's just kind of where we stand on it. When the report comes back again, we could address this issue again when the forty-seven eighty-eight report comes back, as we do with all our speed complaints. And then wherever goes from there, that's this for this committee to decide, but I just wanted to put that out there.
Officer McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, through you to our director, Hoy. Thanks for that, uh, explanation and, uh, report. I know going, as I refer to, I refer back to my experience here on county council, like I think I say, two thousand twelve to two thousand thirteen, it was because it was my Kelly was here at the time, Director Kelly. And I know that was the issue of lowering the speed, but the one similar point to this one, it was on a sharp bend. And I'm not really good in physics myself, but initially, I think it's a word called inertia, that if you're going this way and you try to move it, it's wanting you to keep going straight. And I think that's probably the more of the concern here is I see this is, and and you can't help it if people are going faster or going past that recommended speed, you have a tendency to drift, especially if you're on the inside lane. So I I know that time in on Gray Road one, and I'm sure if my colleagues from Georgia Bluff, uh, quite familiar with that, but there is a section in county council did pass that, and it was, I think, quite successful on that. I know through our director, I know we've had complaints or concerns when we reconstructed that road of yes, making it too slow and people want to get to where they want to go and stuff like that. But I will say this morning on my way here today, I've made this drive for a while. Certainly in August, we passed the most, one of the motions to lower the speed in Kimberly from fifty to forty, maybe it was sixty, forty, and then approaching parts with sixty. I drove through that this morning, and you know what? Yeah, it probably took me an extra minute to get here. But you know what? That extra minute, I think was well worth it for that particular reason, what we're trying to achieve here. So I just, I'll leave it at that, but I think there is some merit to taking a a good look at this just because of the sharp bend. I don't know if we're debating speed, but I also I see our mayor from Blue Mountains last year with regards to Highway twenty-six and reducing that speed. You know, there is, there is merit, I think, on that. And you'll see a lot more lowering to forty. I know our first go-around was in the village of Dundalk, and we lowered to forty. There's reasons why that, you know, and we see that, and we we make those choices as county council. Nothing against staff and and their recommendations and, you know, because county road system is to move people through through the county, that's what it's designed for. And we've had uh, presentations here or delegations here before about, you know, keeping trucks off our, um, county roads. Well, they're there to move traffic as well. So we have to find that balance, no doubt. But I think, I think this has some merit to be looking at, and I guess I'll leave it at that for now, Mr. Warden, I guess, other than a notice motion, or or do we look at it? We receive this as a delegation today, and then we can dress it from there further on. I guess I seek your guidance, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Through you, Mr. Warden. Director Hoy noted that um, staff standard practice is that when speeding complaints come in, they they do get captured in um, a report that is coming up on four seven eight eight, which is the county's traffic bylaw. So that is coming forward in the new year. So that is, is staff standard practice is to take those complaints and and review those and include them in the report that's upcoming. So I think, um, with councils' indulgence, uh, staff can take that back and include that in the upcoming report.
Just one second, Mr. Graham. I just wonder if there's any other questions from council before I go back to you. See none? Go right ahead, sir.
Make a comment. I totally agree that we need a culture change. I totally agree that posting a sign is not going to change everything overnight. And I lived through the change of seventy to sixty on Gray Road thirty-two. Uh, but west of East Back Line, it's dead straight. So as you come off Highway ten, where supposedly you're doing eighty, if not ninety, if not more, it does seem overly slow doing sixty. Again, our issue about this particular area, and thank you for the word inertia, uh, Mr. McQueen, it's really the safety factor. It's about the corner. Um, and I'm pleased, I'm not naive. I know that if we make it fifty, we're probably going to drop the average speed from eighty-six to seventy. And you know what? At the end of the day, I'd probably be happy with that. Because from an engineering perspective, I believe the road is engineered for seventy kilometers to even make that corner. But that's not taking into effect or the houses, the traffic and the speed. So again, I appreciate whatever council can do for us, and I'll leave it in your hands. Thank you.
Thank you very much for taking the time to present to us, Mr. Graham. Okay, council. Back to our agenda, we are at item seven A. Uh, we're dealing with the Georgian College, uh, nursing program donation. I'm looking for, I'm moving to put the item moved by Counselor Hutchison, seconded by Counselor O'Leary. Our C A O is going to take the floor.
Good morning, council. This report is coming forward as a, as recommended by the Healthcare Funding Task Force. And the presentations made by Dr. Marilyn West Moyn and her colleagues from Georgian College, both to that task force and also the delegation that appeared before this council on September the twenty-third. Gray County has played an important advocacy role in making the case to the province that the colleges should have the ability to grant four-year uh, BSCN degrees. And as we all know, forecasts show that health human resources are in a critically short supply at this phase, and that is forecast only to, um, become more acute in the future. Having a program close to home means placements can be in our facilities rather than larger urban centers. And we have a better chance of securing new grads in our healthcare facilities. A local program is also more accessible to our residents looking to upgrade their skills. And in the, in the specific situation of, uh, this program at the Owens Sound and Berry campuses, both Gray Bruce Health Services and Collingwood General Marine Hospital have provided, um, very strong letters of support to Georgian College to move this program forward. Since, uh, Marilyn was here, the province has given the college, um, uh, approval for their curriculum. So there are no other roadblocks in place to moving forward with the program accepting students beginning in the fall of of two thousand twenty-two. So while the, while the province has given approval and they will fund the program's operations, um, as we heard, the capital costs for the, to get the program up and running are the responsibility of the college. Owens Sound campus will see a ninety-two-hundred square foot renovation to create state-of-the-art um, simulation labs and training spaces. And that renovation is estimated to cost about seven point one million dollars. Georgian has begun a public fundraising campaign and, um, in their visit to us, asked the county to support them, or one million dollars towards that total project cost. In this report, staff are suggesting that the funds that Georgian has requested could be drawn from our healthcare funding reserve. Um, we currently have in excess of a million dollars in that reserve. We put away half a half a percent annually um, into the reserve. So at the, at the present time, that's somewhere around three hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Um, we are currently looking at a policy um, through that healthcare, uh, funding task force to understand, um, going forward into the future, what, um, an appropriate level of contribution might be to a future reserve as well as the kinds of projects that that we might want to support if we think that there's maybe some more clarity that's required there. But where we are today, um, we do have, have the resources in that reserve should council, um, wish to support Georgians' ask and feel that that's an appropriate location for the funds to be drawn from. I'm happy to take any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Madam C A O. Counselor Soever.
Look, there we go. Um, so I'm just wondering, where are we with that policy? We we started this committee in twenty nineteen. And, you know, the the goal was to have a policy as to what kind of projects and how much money we should be putting aside. And now we have a fairly major request, which if funded from the the reserves would would basically deplete the reserve. So we're kind of putting the cart before the horse here. I think I I really support the pro nursing school project. I think it's a great project, but you know, in the context of all the other asks, um, for healthcare funding and, you know, without having a policy, um, which we hope to have a few years ago, um, you know, I think it's kind of like making a decision without having a framework of what the other potential asks are and, um, you know, should, should it be limited to capital projects? Is it operational? We don't really know that because we don't have a policy. So, um, where are we with the policy?
Through you, Mr. Warden. Counselor Soever is correct that we did, uh, initiate uh, the task force some time ago. And I'm sorry that COVID wasn't foreseen at that time, and the people that we wanted to hear from in order to create the policy, we felt that many of them were very, very busy attending to, um, the the requirements of COVID within their own organizations. And so we put some of the task work, task force work on hold. We have, um, a meeting scheduled. We have a meeting scheduled this month to hear from. The final three stakeholders that we'd originally committed to speaking with. So I am still very committed to getting a report back in front of this council. After we have that meeting so that we can with a draft policy for your consideration. As far as other asks, while some of our delegates or some of our stakeholders have certainly. Indicated to us that they have plans in the in the future. I am not aware of any specific ask at this time, looking for. Resources in 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 immediate timeframe. I, as I say, we still have another one more meeting to go that could change, but as it stands right now, I'm not aware of anything specific. We just fulfilled our commitments. To the Markdale Hospital. We have recently completed commitments to Gray Bruce Health Services.
Counsel Robinson. Sorry, Counselor Soever, were you finished?
Yeah, it's good to know that we're making progress.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Sharon, through you to our Gray County C A O. I'm very, very pleased that this report has come forward. And I do note that Gray County was very active in the advocacy for bringing. Bachelor of Science degree in nursing to Gray County and understanding the success of. Of that diligence to bring the the program here to Owen Sound as one of the first programs in central Ontario. So I do want to say well done. For that, well done for everyone involved in that, going back to all the delegations with Roma and. Roma, A M O, meeting with the Minister of Health. This is a very good support document and. The idea of Gray County supporting the request, I I think is incredibly important. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Robinson. Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And I I note that in the past, this fund has been used, or at least the funds, the health. Or the point five percent funds have been used in the past for other health related projects, the. The. What is it? In the own sound hospital, the. The M R I, yes, they we've helped support that project and we've also supported the the med studies, the marine emergency duties at Georgian College. So. We have a very good track record, supporting very worthy projects at Georgian and in the rest of the county. And I think it's important, quite frankly, if we're going to support bricks and mortar. The bricks and mortar are no good unless you've got the bodies to get the job done. And we have a critical shortage of health professionals right across the province, if not the country at the moment. So anything we can do to support generating more health professionals. At home, I think we need to support. So I fully support this this initiative and this report is very well taken. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Mill. Deputy Warden.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and to you, Madam C A O. Yeah, certainly for full supportive of supporting that this program. I just I did that. I thought the Markdale Hospital did come back for a little bit of an ask over, but what we gave. I thought they came in May or June, did they not? Because I know they're they're going to a lot of the municipalities that are asking for a little bit more above what was. Now, I know they came. To county council, did a presentation, but I thought they did ask for. The idea of a little bit, because I know they're going around lower municipalities and they're asking for a little bit just to top up because they're. Because the campaign was over twenty years and some of those original donors maybe aren't with us anymore. So just just as a as a background thing. And certainly, what is that point five? How much is that roughly a year? Just I didn't see the report. I was that equate to what's that point five?
I was suggesting about three hundred and sixty thousand. Yeah, and and I I believe that there was. Some minor adjustment, if I can call it that, to to Markdale when we completed our transfer to them.
And I know there is some maybe some asks on horizon, but if we're at that point five, we're generating three three sixty, well, that's still going to replenish that fund and I'm happy to hear that part. And certainly. Yeah, moving forward with that policy will be good, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, sorry, Council of Compass.
Thank you very much, Mr. Warden, and good morning, County Council. My first opportunity to say that. I fully support this this program going forward. I'm very excited about the possibilities. That this has for many facets of need in our community throughout Gray County. Not the least of which is nursing and the education of nurses close to home. Speaking with the CEO of Gray Bruce Health Services last week, he was absolutely convinced that he would. Sweep up all of those nurses that were graduated within a minute, within a heartbeat. So there's lots of room there for new nursing students to come in. But I'm also excited about this because of the opportunity for. An influence on other allied healthcare professionals such as personal care workers. And others who will benefit from the learnings that will be available in the end, the lab work and the experiences that will be. Available through this program. It's a marvelous program. I fully support it and fully congratulate Kim and with all of the work that's been done. To pull this together.
Thank you. Counselor Mackey.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. And I completely agree and support this this request. You know, with the aging number of nurses that we've got in our healthcare sector right now, we need to get some new people qualified and to do that locally, a lot of those people probably will remain in our area. So it's. You know, very important. I hope that the hospital doesn't recruit all of them because long term care certainly needs some. And I I'm optimistic that we'll be able to get some. So this is an opportunity that we can't can't let go and we need to support it in every way we can. And I do hope that there will be other valid requests come along and we'll be able to address those when they do come. Thanks.
Thank you, Counsel Mackey. Counselor Desai.
Thank you. Thank you, Warden. Thanks. Time for Macar is an interesting point on. The the students from this program remaining in the community. I know Gray County staff through in. Along with Georgian College has programs where we focus on international students and trying to keep them in the community. Is there a possibility or perhaps is there a need to see if there is a is there a need for a program where we focus on. Medical science students or P S Ws for students, for example. Who we need in our community. And if we're offering programs at local institutions, is there a need for a program that also looks at creating an experience for them where they they are. More likely to remain within the community after they've graduated from the program?
So, C A O, are you able to speak to that?
Thank you, you, Mr. Warden. Thank you for that question, Counselor Desai. Just this week. Director of Economic Development, Tourism and Culture, and I met again with Georgian College, not only to discuss international students and. And the practical nurse, this was in in reference to the Practical Nursing Program. But, you know, what can and should be done to facilitate. Those students being able to have the best experiences that they can in in their. In-service training, onsite training at the various healthcare institutions. Can we assist since many of them won't have vehicles and transportation is a challenge? Are there things that can be done to ensure that the students are getting to their placements? Back and forth and and really have an opportunity to experience a breadth of of healthcare sector jobs. So I'm I'm optimistic and hopeful that we will see some some further announcements on that front as as we work together to find solutions.
Very good. I do not see any other hand. So perhaps it's time to call the question. On the motion to receive this report and to approve the contribution as recommended. All in favor? Does anyone oppose? That is carried. Thank you very much. Thank you, Madam C A O. Okay, we're moving on to item seven B. Dealing with a natural snow fence and crop snow fence program. Is it going to be Jim or you, Pat? It's going to be Jim. Okay, Jim, you're on deck. I'm looking for a mover to put the item on the floor. Moved by Counselor Early, seconded by Deputy Warden. Looking for Jim.
Sorry about that. I had to rejoin as a participant. So today I'm here to present the. Report and policy on not using natural snow fence, either through trees or corn crop. And we're asking that this report be received and the policy be endorsed. We're also asking that staff be directed to develop the agreements for both the tree and corn crop program. Along with the Clerks Department. We're also asking that the syntheses are going to be rather small. Agreements, small dollar value agreements of the Director of Transportation, be given approval to sign them. And that the delegation be included in the next update. We're also including, we're asking that staff be able to go out now and talk to farmers about. Using their corn crop, for snow for snow hedge. So, any questions?
Counselor Mackey, go ahead.
Thanks, Miss Warden. I'm just wondering, based on the current crop prices, are we confident that the amount that we're. You know, willing to contribute towards the farmer will compensate them fully for the loss of, you know, that twelve rows of corn?
Not a hundred percent sure, but. We're requesting. Oh, we're sorry. We're suggesting that we give a fifty percent premium on the current corn price. So where we have a bigger corn would be a thousand and twenty three years of yesterday's corn price, we'd be paying fifteen thirty five. So that's in line with peel and duffrin. Simple pays by the input and. Cash price for our December future price for corn, and they are around fifty percent this year. It varies for simple because they go on the input and. And the futures price. So this year's simple is around fifty percent as well, premium. I don't know if it's enough to interest farmers or not. That's the question. I guess we'll find it when we get out and and talk to people. And farmers on council, that's right. I just want to ask farmers on council that know more about the ingredients of harvesting. Corn that's been up all winter. Maybe the fifty percent doesn't cover that, but we're hoping that will be. Sorry.
Deputy Warden, McQueen.
Thank you, Mr. Warden, and to through you to the report. Thank you for bringing the report forward. Certainly, corn corn planning would work for those that are cash croppers, but maybe a bee farmer or whatever or others that don't do as much cropping may not work as well. Question I want to ask is with regards to the tree snow fence. Generally, that row would have to be probably twenty meters, thirty meters back from the edge of the road to be to to make it worth to benefit what we're trying to achieve here. I'm trying to think of that program that you sit on, Mr. Warden. It just escapes me where they pay farmers to take land out of production, but they pay for that. I'm trying to think of that acronym.
Alice?
Alice, yes, Alice. So I just wonder if we could investigate to get maybe like the the tree planting is is the best bet because then it's not like we have that on Gray Road seven, right? On your Gray Road forty nine, I think it's been quite successful. I just wondered, you know, other than sure, a lot of farmers take out fence rows. But it has been proven that's fence rows do keep moisture and do keep top soil like you put in your report. I keep looking at at Pat, but I should be looking up the screen here. But I just wondered if there's a little bit more if it could be investigated across the provinces or even the even the province is looking at the natural snow fence. I just think that these need to be a little bit of incentive. For the farmers to plant those trees and Alice is a good example where they pay for that land to come out of production because. You know, with the cost of farming today and 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 high cost of farming, you know, the efficiencies is in volume, right? And all that type of thing. So. But I but I just wondered if there if through that program or if there's other. Counties, other jurisdictions in the province, really across North America are using some other incentives. And I use the one Alice as an example. So I don't know that could be investigated. Maybe you're Mr. Warden, you said on that community that could be asked or whatever. I just think that just to create that little bit of incentive. Goes a long way. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. We're planning on doing a GPSing all the. Snow drifting areas and getting a sort of a dollar value for county council to determine what would cost to plant everything in trees. So it's probably the first step that we're going to do and then. We'll come back with that. And then longer term, if someone wants to pay similar to the loss of crop for corn, then we can look at that as well.
Anything further, Deputy Warden?
No, I just think it's a great way of, I mean, I think you capture a little bit in the report where you've seen places where you do not have that one twenty four coming up from Shelburne is a perfect example where you have areas where. Those trees and also it's wide open, the insurance cost, the maintenance costs, you know, I think, for example, on that stretch of road, duffrin. I mean, they had to go and buy their own snow blower just to keep the roads black because of the wind, right? And and certainly there's all the the other advantages of of moisture loss and and topsoil. It just, it's so beneficial. To create those natural snow fences that it takes time. It takes time and I and I see that on Gray Road seven, how it's been very effective in other areas and it's just. It just, we got to get there. It's just how do we get there? And maybe we have to be creative, but I think it's so important as you identify those areas that need to be done. It's just, but on the other side, the economies of scale for cash cropping that they're taking the snow fences, they're taking the trees out, they're taking, you know, they're taking all that stuff out because it's all about. You know, big equipment and and all that kind of stuff. So we just got to find that sweet spot that that works, that we achieve all and we move forward. And maybe there's recognition to those farmers that do it. Maybe there's some award or maybe there's a out for dinner. I don't know. There's maybe there's a, you know, just something that gives them that incentive that they feel good about what they're doing. I don't know. I always thought that from Shelburne to St. Hampton would be a great way to create a trail system that you. You you secure that land, you plant the trees, you create a a trail system, and you also create a corridor for animals. And we talked about climate change and all that stuff, too. So maybe there's a lot of win wins that we can sort of work on. Just as keep moving forward, but keep up the good work on that part. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Desai.
Thank you, Warden. Thanks. The one question that I do have is that if if we're not getting. I should have remained seated. If we're not getting. Farmers to sign up for this program based on the price that are in the suggested policy. Will staff be coming back to council to make amendments to that policy? Or is that something that will be included in the delegation of duties?
Mr. Nicole.
I think we'll have to come back and discuss it with council. Right numbers, as I said, we're proposing fifty percent, but. We don't get if you don't get by him, then we'll have to bump it up a bit. So we'll do that in the spring. We'll be back in the spring to talk about how successful this program was for the corn. And the council on the tree tree program.
Counselor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. As Counselor McQueen pointed out, when you plant trees. Or a windbreak in your field, it does create a microclimate. Close to those trees. So you you do benefit from a bitter, a bit more yield. From that. The other question I had was for Jim was have you approached the province? Maybe they could pitch some money into this because anytime you leave crop out, the Queen's livestock benefits and. You know, maybe maybe the province would like to pitch a little money into the pot to feed their livestock. Just a thought. Thank you.
Look into that.
Counsel Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I find this a most interesting initiative, and certainly from a climate lens perspective, looking at natural barriers. So most interesting, certainly support the, the report and the recommendations. And I'd only ask that perhaps this could be shared with the lower tier infrastructure and public works departments, and maybe there could be more of an initiative at, at lower tier level that can connect with Gray County as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Gamble.
Yes. Councilman McQueen brought up an issue there. I, I have, coming from a foreign community, I don't see this corn idea really working out that well. It might in some instances, but to my way of thinking, the tree line is the best and a double row tree line would definitely be the right way to go with this. That's why I said it.
Anything to add to that, Jim?
Well, Simcoe County's been doing this for a few years, and they only have between six and eight participants depending on crop rotation. So I don't know how much they're advertising the project, but yeah, we'll go through and try to do our best effort to get corn rows as snow hedge. But I, I think that's right to use trees as a long-term, long-term benefit, whether we go to a single row versus the double row that the county's been using to minimize the impact on the amount of crop that's lost. Lots to discuss.
Okay, I do not see any other hands, so perhaps it's time to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? And is there anyone, sorry, I should be taking a little bit more slowly, I'm told. And is there anyone opposed? Seeing none, that is Carrie. Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim. Okay, we're going next to item seven C, dealing with South Gate Meadows, Flatto. I need a mover to put the item on the floor. Councilor, you called him before me. Councilor Woodbury and Councilor Keveney is seconding. Go ahead, Randy.
Great. Good morning, everyone. So the purpose of this report is to consider a proposed county official plan amendment in the township of Southgate. It proposes to designate a portion of lands adjacent to the settlement area Dundalk from rural inhabitants to primary settlement area inhabitants. This official plan would allow for the consideration of a proposed plan, a subdivision application, known as Southgate Meadows, Flatto Glen Oak Phase Two. I think Rob's going to pull up the presentation for the in a second here. I'll show you the subject lands. We're just on slide two, Rob. Excellent. Thanks for that. So the subject lands are described as part of lots 225 and 226 concession to southwest of the Toronto Sidney Road and the geographic township of Proton, township of Southgate. The lands are approximately 18.4 hectares in size. However, the actual area proposed for development is, is less than half that size. The subject lands are currently vacant with a portion of the subject lands used for agricultural purposes and a portion containing woodlands and hazard lands. And that's the portion that you can see on the, kind of the west side of that, that property. North of subject lands is the county CP rail trail. So you can see the, the rail trail running right above the, the area there as well as some vacant agricultural lands. And then east and south of subject lands are residential uses, including the approved phase one for this overall plan development. West of the subject lands include agriculture uses, residential uses, and some vacant lands. This proposed development also requires a local official plan amendment and a zoning bylaw amendment in addition to the plan of subdivision application, which will be dealt with in a future staff report. Access to the proposed residential units will be through an existing draft approved plan of subdivision known as Southgate Meadows Flatto, Flatto Glen Oak Phase One, which is currently under construction as we speak. The proposed plan would connect to Corbett Street and Atchison Avenue as part of that, that first phase of development. There will be additional internal roads that will be constructed to provide access to the proposed lots. Servicing will be via municipal water and sewer services, which would be allocated by the township of the town at time of final approval for each phase. The township is actively working on environmental assessments and upgrades to expand their services in order to accommodate the projected growth for the settlement area Dundalk. The servicing matters will be dealt with as part of the recommended conditions of draft approval in the future staff report. Next slide, Rob. So I apologize for the size of it, but this, this shows the plan of subdivision application, which proposes to create a total of 155 residential units, 83 single attached units, 66 townhouses and six partial lots. And as mentioned, this will be dealt with in a future staff report. Next slide, Rob. So in terms of the public comments received, we held a joint public meeting with the township back in January 27th of this year. We received one comment supporting both phases of the development. And they are hoping that the sewer services will be extended all the way down Glen Oak Street in order for them to be able to connect in the future. Staff, township staff will investigate that option in the future. With respect to another comment we received regarding potential impact from this development on the existing residents on Doyle Street, the CP rail trail acts as a divider between the homes on Doyle Street and the planned development. So any potential impact on the east side of the rail trail from the proposed development should be minimal and should only occur during construction. And there were no further comments received from the public. Next slide, please, Rob. So in terms of agency comments received, so again, majority of the comments received are more applicable to the plan of subdivision application, which will be dealt with in a future staff report. Over just to summarize some of those comments we have received from the Storix, Soggy, M A T, East Lincoln Hydro One, they had no objection. Can't oppose that they would be delivering via a community mailbox. Enbridge requires conditions of draft approval for easements or to service the development. Belcana requires the same. Grand River Conservation Authority, they deferred to the Soggy Valley Conservation Authority for comments because the planet proposed development is primarily within their watershed. Next slide, Rob. The Soggy Valley Conservation Authority, they reviewed the applications. They noted they're acceptable to S V C A staff. They provided some recommended conditions of draft approval, which will be considered in that future staff report. And they also recommended that the O P A's, the official plan amendments and zoning amendments reflect the updated mapping identified in the environment impact study for both the hazard lands and the other wetlands. And those have been incorporated into the proposed revised schedules that are attached to the official plan amendment. That's before community the whole today. Southgate Public Works Department, they noted that this will need to be serviced by municipal waters, sewer and stormwater services. No road winding is required, and they noted that it's within a wellhead protection area zone D, which is applicable to what they call Dean Apple products, and those are managed by education and outreach programs. And township of Southgate, staff presented a report to township council September 15th. And township council passed a motion supporting the proposed county official plan amendment to expand the settlement area Dundalk at this location. Next slide, please, Rob. Just a quick summary of the planning analysis. There was an environment impact study that was done for the applications. The E I S recommended some mapping revisions, which have been incorporated, as I mentioned. The S V C also identified some recommended conditions, which will be recognized in the future conditions of draft approval. In terms of protection of agricultural resources, so the subject lands are designated as rural in the county official plan today. There was an agricultural impact assessment that was completed. And although the, the comment from the, that assessment noted that there would be a permanent loss of 8.7 hectares of rural land, the impacts on the surrounding agricultural operations in the study area will be negligible and can be mitigated. And some of those mitigation measures will be considered as part of the recommended conditions of draft approval. In terms of the appropriate location of growth and development, so when, of course, when we expand a settlement area, it requires what's called a comprehensive review. And that was submitted with the applications in accordance with the branch of policy statements, county plan and the township official plan. And the conference review analysis reviewed basically the current land supply available to accommodate the, the future growth, identified what's currently planned and approved for developments within Dundalk, and also analyzed the growth projections within our current official plan, as well as those recently supported by council in terms of the updated growth management study. Based on the conference review analysis, it also analyzed the potential locations for where an expansion could occur around the village of, settlement area of Dundalk. And basically, the commerce review analysis concluded that this was the appropriate location for future growth. It is a natural extension of the phase one of this overall plan development. And so they recommended that this is be the preferred location. County staff and township staff have reviewed that conference review document, and we agree with the conclusions and therefore recommend that O P A six be approved. So the recommendation is before community the whole, basically recommending that the official plan amendment number six be approved and that the bylaw be prepared for consideration by council at the next council meeting. Happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much, Randy. I do not see any hands. So with that said, I think we'll call the question. All those in favor? And is there, sorry, I'm moving too quickly again. And is there anyone opposed? And that's Carrie. Thank you very much, Randy. I think we can keep moving, can we, Madam Claire? Yes, good. Okay, we'll move on to item seven D. Service System Manager Consortium Agreement. I believe this is going to be Melissa. Okay. Melissa, I'm going to call for a mover to put the item on the floor. Move by councillor Body, seconded by and councillor Columbus. I got you this time. All right, you have the floor.
There we go. There we go. Good morning, Mr. Warden and members of councillor, council. And we, the purpose of this, this report is to seek authorization to enter into consortium agreement with Stratford, Bruce and Huron Counties to pursue the next phase of our employment services transformation, and that's to become a service of system manager for the area. We have brought forward some previous reports outlining the province's plans to transform employment services. And this is to ensure that job seekers and businesses are provided with the best possible employment services in the area. The transformation is to bring together several employment programs, including Ontario Works, O D S P and Employment Ontario into one system that will be managed by the service system manager for that, for that particular area. The municipal service managers in Bruce County, Gray, Huron and Stratford have been working together to be the new organization for our area. The, the consortium will represent our economic region as defined by the Ministry of Labor, Training and Skills Development. The group was successful in the step one request for quotation process. That was a report that was brought forward in July, and we were determined to be a qualified applicant among several private sector companies. Some of them are even international companies from the U S and U K that are qualified to apply. We, we are now in a position to know that we're not competing with any of our local service system providers. They were not, they did not have the capacity to, to compete and become a service of system manager. So we won't be competing against anyone local such as the Y or V P I. And it was through much discussion and visioning that we began to see a role for ourselves as a consortium under the new system. The lead applicant for the purpose of the consortium is Bruce County. And they, we must, as a group, submit a copy of a contractual agreement between the consortium members to the ministry prior to executing the transfer payment agreement with the ministry. So we're, we're a little bit early in the process with having the agreement ready, but we felt it was important to have the consortium contractual agreement at least in a draft position to demonstrate responsible governance and good faith among the members as we are going forward in the planning process. So the draft agreement is here today. It'll be going forward to each one of the councils that are part of the consortium. And we are seeking authorization to enter into the consortium agreement with Stratford, Bruce and Huron and to pursue the next phase of employment services transformation through the submission of a call for proposal to become a service system manager for the area.
Thank you very much. Barb, is there anything you wish to add to that?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Melissa did a great job of explaining that. It's been a quick process for us. Collaborating with our partners has been an exciting venture. We hope that we move this forward, and we'd like to be able to bring back some exciting news for you. It's a very quick turnaround time. I think it's November 5th that we have to have this completed and submitted to the province. So lots on our plate right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. To council, any questions from council? Councilor Mill.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Question I have is, will this service agreement, if it goes forward, have any impact on our staffing levels here in Gray County?
Who would? Were you looking for me, Mr. Mill? I'll start. I'll just speak a little bit to the conversation, and then I'll pass it back to Melissa, who has some further in-depth knowledge. We do know that if we aren't the successful service system manager, we are looking at, well, we're looking at resource reallocation. Some of our staff are providing these roles in our various offices now in the four service, the four service manager areas, the four counties. And so it's very important for us to be able to continue with this. The other piece for us that's important is that we have that local vision and we're connected with our local community partners. We know we do it really well. We collaborate. Having someone come in from outside, especially an international company, not as connected to the work we do, some of the, some of the nuances for the four rural municipalities. And so our concerted efforts now are to maintain some of that, that connection, that, that control, that ability to be able to respond locally and build, build that capacity with each other. So I would say that we could lose some, if, if we aren't successful, we definitely could see some, some changes with staffing. I don't know, Melissa, if you have anything to add to that?
Bruce County is the lead. It's expected that they would probably gain a role with, they would have the administrative funding to, to, as the lead of the consortium. So it's not expected that we would have any additional staff roles, if anything, will have less because we, the Ontario Works program won't have their employment support funding.
Go ahead, Councilor Mill.
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. And that was the nature of my question. Are some of our staff, are their positions threatened by if this agreement goes forward with Bruce here and Stratford? And how will we mitigate that?
Madam C A O.
Is that better? Okay, through you, Mr. Warden. I think one of the challenges that we face right now is that, as the staff have indicated, it's early days. And we don't have all of the details around exactly, I think, the how, what the expectations are of the province about the, the levels of service and the targets that will need to be met. In the financial section, the That will need to be met in the financial section, the financial and resources section of the report. It does speak to the fact that the system service manager, this new role. Will be in part funded on a pay for performance model. If I have to have, as your CEO, if I have to have a concern about that. It's that pay for performance and municipal budgets don't always go hand in hand. So I mean, we're very, Barb and her team and her colleagues are very active at the table. We're, we're paying close attention here and, and I think. Raising concerns like that where we can, but I think it's important for this council to realize that. You know, there is that potential depending on the, the targets, depending on. How far ahead the funding is, is set. And where the economy goes because sometimes forecasts and reality don't always a hundred percent align. So that there are lots of things to think about here, but I think until we understand exactly what that funding model looks like. It's very difficult, I think, to say with a real certainty exactly how this could play out for us.
Good enough, councillor? No? Anyone else? Councillor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden. I guess with some uncertainty, are we confident that this will provide better service to the clients?
I'll take a stab at that first. I, so again, thank you for the question. We are, Kim, Kim is absolutely correct. We're still very early days and. We do think though, that the collaborative approach with the local responsive partnerships is the way to go. We, we've seen three prototypes across the province. We've seen one that was with a. Certainly a large multi-international company. So it's private partnerships. We've seen. University and college led experiences and certainly and, and then a varied approach in between those two. And it's relationships that are really making the difference. And when you can have conversations that respond locally to. Your, your economy and the labor shortages and the challenges that are taking place, the, the people who are in need of assistance, but perhaps have transportation. All those pieces that are different than in an urban setting, I think that we would see a stronger system. And so that's one of the reasons that we wanted to move forward with this collaboration. We have so many reasons to support one another where we have so many consistent. Components within our rural municipalities. And, and the fact that we are able to be nimble and we can respond quickly when needed to, when there's a change in our economy. I don't know, Melissa, if there's anything else you want to add?
From what we've heard, there wasn't a great deal of interest in our area because we're such a large catchment area. If you can imagine between Stratford all the way up to the tip of the Bruce Peninsula. And then when, when you consider the population size and the demographic. That the, the competition isn't, isn't really, really focused on this area. So there was some fear there. I would say that we, that our service providers. Could be at risk of, you know, a large private sector coming in without a good understanding. But all, and there also just wasn't a great deal of competition. It didn't appear for this area, so. That definitely influenced our decision to start moving forward with this idea.
Good councillor Mackey? Madam CEO?
If I can just add to what Melissa and Barb have said, I mean, the whole purpose of this. Is to do a better job of getting people who aren't currently active in the labor market. In the labor market, getting them jobs. So I think there's. A coming together of the life stabilization aspect of things that we know will continue to be part of social services. No matter what happens with this. It's housing, it's public health, it's getting people into the labor market. And those are all things that are really, you know, central and core to the work that the county does all the time. So certainly from that perspective. The more intimate knowledge that we have. Coming out of this to feed into things like economic development, to talk to partners like Georgian College, who are going to provide training, et cetera. You can, you know, that's where I see. We can play a really important role in all of this because we do understand our market and we do have some levers. That, that we can pull as we start to. I'm going to have trouble. As, as we, it was, we see these changes happening. And when we, if we're going to be on the front end of knowing how successful we are in getting people placed under, under a new model. We can also understand as early as possible in the process, what else needs to happen. And similar to another conversation we had today, take an advocacy role with the province if something's not working well. I'm so sorry.
Councillor Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. Warden. And just really listening to the full conversation here, both from staff and county council. Based on also what our CAO has just said, are there key performance? Indicators for this new model, which will show that we're going in the right path? Or that there may be, maybe some adjustments that, that need to be made. Thank you.
Tara?
Yes, there is. I have a package here. It's, it's called the Performance Management Framework and Key Performance Indicators. It's an addendum to, it's a hundred and twenty-two page. Proposal, the call for proposals, a hundred and twenty-two pages of weighted score system to make sure that you're meeting a technical. Technical and commercial envelopes, the province, and then this is an addendum. And I. I'm not really sure where to start with it for you. We could certainly. Provide you some more detail. It's. It's hard to summarize because it's, it's very detailed, but it's very weighted and it. Certainly hones in on, we, we must work with many groups such as. Indigenous clients served youth with higher support needs. Then there's streams of clients based on their employability, their stream ABC. Things are weighted. Your performance is weighted based on what stream people are in. There's a whole system for how. You determine what stream that they're in and. Francophone, general population of clients with disabilities, ODSP clients, Ontario Works clients, that's just to name. A few, but I mean, that's, that's most of them, but.
I don't think I see any other hands. Oh, councillor Robinson?
Well, thank you, Mr. Warden. And just knowing the, the detail in terms of key report or key performance appraisals and the, the metrics for identifying whether. Just in terms of the overall program. So noting that there is that addendum to it, I, I'm very pleased with, with the response. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Seeing no further hands, I think it's time to call the question. All those in favor of the motion? Have I waited long enough now? This time, sorry, you can take your hands down. Is there anyone opposed? That is carried. Thank you very much, Melissa, Barb. Barb, I think you're still on deck. Is Tara going to be joining you?
I believe she will be. I believe she's there.
Okay. All right. So we're dealing with seven E, the childcare sector status update. Moved by, I'm going to say councillor Carlton, seconded by, I saw you councillor Mackey, but I'm going to say councillor Gamble because he kind of twitched. Okay, so Tara, you have the floor. Sorry, you'll need to press your green button.
Great. Sorry about that. Good morning, Mr. Warden and county council. We're bringing forward an information report to you today to ensure council is aware of the current pressures being faced by the childcare sector within Gray County. Quality licensed childcare is critical to supporting our workforce strategies. And as in many sectors, shortages, staffing shortages are limiting the operational capacities of our licensed childcare programs in Gray County. In addition to the local staffing shortage, there's a shortage of registered ECEs across the province. Currently, the local licensed childcare programs are operating at approximately seventy percent of their licensed capacity. And several centers are also operating at reduced daily operational hours to continue to meet their staffing requirements to meet child ratios. Without taking into consideration the needed areas of expansion, operators report that an additional one hundred and fifty staff would be required. To be a full operational capacity at their regular hours. This includes frontline staff, support staff and supply staff to support the regular operations. Operators are reporting an increase in staff leaving the sector and greater difficulty in replacing those staff. The high demand for employment across the region is resulting in staff leaving for other sectors. There are things like higher pay and signing bonuses that are attracting them to leave this program. We recognize the critical importance of ECEs and are working with our partners in Bruce County. To create a committee that will focus on the recruitment and retention of staff to support quality early learning and childcare. For, for both our regions. The activities outlined in the report are a good first step for strategic long-term planning. And we continue to work on strategies to support the immediate needs that are being faced. We are waiting on details on the possible federal provincial universal childcare plan. And we'll bring a report back to council with local impacts and opportunities when we receive that information. I'd also like to take a brief moment to thank the dedication of the staff working in the licensed childcare program throughout the pandemic. They have pivoted with all the changing requirements from public health and the ministry of education to continue to provide quality. And engaging programming for our youngest residents. And I'm happy to address any questions you may have.
Thank you, Tara. I don't think we can thank the childcare sector enough. What they did during the pandemic. Man, thank you. Questions from council? I see none. Oh. Councillor Mackey, I'll vote you first.
Thanks, Mr. Warden. Thanks for the presentation. Are there any daycare centers that are available to people working shift work? Any of the licensed beds cater to people that work night shift?
Doesn't like me this morning for you, Mr. Warden. Our licensed home childcare program does offer some overnight care. We are currently working on recruiting more people that will offer that care, but our licensed center base do not offer care past regular. Typically six to six or seven to six hours. To operate a licensed childcare center under the requirements for overnight care is very cost prohibitive. Staffing would be also very difficult. So we're really focusing on the home childcare angle to try to support that.
Thank you, councillor Carlton. You're next.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I was also questioning the same thing that councillor Mackey was, but I look forward when we're looking at a nursing program going in at Georgian College. How many of the students that attend that will be perhaps young parents living in the area who are going to need expanded healthcare or daycare for their children? And wondering if anyone has ever looked at sort of a twenty-four hour daycare that would operate, say, out of the hospital? And could that also be part of a training program for the early childhood education? If there's a way to support that and try to combine everything moving forward. Thank you.
Through you, Mr. Warden. It's definitely an innovative idea. We did briefly discuss that. Three or four years ago about the need for that. As I said, the operational logistics of that are fairly complex. I know there is one center in Barry that operates that, but they are very few and far between. But if that's something that council would like more information on, we can certainly research that for you.
I do not see any other hands. Okay, so we'll call the question. All those in favor of the motion? I've waited long enough. Anyone opposed? I'm seeing none. That too is Carrie. Supposed to go into closed meeting right now and in your hands. It's okay, good. Then we are going to be going into a closed meeting. Madam Clerk, who needs to stay?
Staying will be CAO Windgrove, Director Morrow. Morrow, myself, Tara, Rob and Randy Schertz.
We'll just take a few seconds. Yeah. Oh, yes, we do need a motion to go into closed. That's a move by councillor Robinson, seconded by councillor Patterson. Thank you very much. We're back in open session now. I would make a declaration that we discussed only the items indicated under the proposed meeting matters. We're on to item number nine now. Oh, other business, is there any? Other business? So Randy, I believe you're going to make a. The introduction? Thank you.
It's all good. Thank you. And good afternoon again. So we thought with this being the first in-person hybrid council meeting, that'd be a great time to introduce you to our new climate change manager. Linda Swanson. Some of you, I know I've already had the pleasure of meeting Linda, but we wanted to introduce Linda to all of council today. So Linda has been working with us, and then it's back here. Come on up, Linda. So Linda has been working with us for the past couple of months and just based on her experience and knowledge has. Really hit the ground running for us and we just, we were so super fortunate to have her as part of the great county team. Linda's previous position was with the city of Toronto as the manager of policy and research in the environment and energy division. Where she was developing and overseeing the implementation of Toronto's Climate Change Action Plan. Which they branded as transformed TO. So we're going to have to come up with a nice catchy name for ours as well. Linda has a bachelor in environmental studies and environment and resource studies. As well as a masters of global environmental governance, both from the University of Waterloo. As part of her master's degrees, she did some studies and publications, including sustainable agriculture. And which will of course be a great asset for, for Gray County, given the importance of agriculture in our area. So with that, I'm now going to turn over to Linda and she's going to provide some updates regarding the climate change action plan. So welcome, Linda.
Thank you, everyone, for the warm welcome. I know I'm standing between you and lunch, so it will be a brief verbal update. As Randy said, I'm new to the county and also new to the area, the privilege of moving to Owen Sound in August. And I'm really enjoying the community here and also the, the land and landscape. In terms of the Climate Change Action Plan, as you would be aware, the Climate Change Task Force that many of you sit on. Approved a draft action plan in July for further consultation and engagement. And really that is what I've been working on since arriving for the last few months. And so we're really seeking to receive feedback from member municipalities, residents and key stakeholders on that plan. There's an internal climate change working group of Gray County staff that helped develop that plan and are now providing feedback also to make sure that it connects with our asset management work. Our emergency management work. and are now providing feedback also to make sure that it connects with our asset management work, our emergency management work, a fleet review that is upcoming, and also the long-term care home redevelopment work to see that climate change is being considered across the portfolio of Gray County activity. Uh, we've also established recognizing that so much of this is about, uh, working in partnership with municipalities, uh, a municipal staff community of practice. So each municipality representative, uh, in Gray County has identified a climate action staff contact. Um, and as a number of your municipalities are already working on climate change action plans, the community of practice is an opportunity to coordinate efforts, uh, avoid duplication of efforts, uh, and really make sure that the pieces fit together, uh, in the best way possible. It has a focus on operations and again, sharing information at the staff level and kind of the implementation of the strategic direction set by council. In terms of public stakeholder engagement, uh, we're excited to announce that we have set the dates, uh, for three public engagement sessions. They will be virtual at this time. Uh, they're coming up at the end of October. Uh, one is from seven to eight P M on Tuesday, October twenty-sixth. On Wednesday afternoon, on the twenty-seventh, from one to two thirty, and then on Thursday, right after work, from five thirty to seven P M. Uh, all of that information is posted on the Gray County Climate Action webpage, gray dot C A slash climate action. Um, in addition to the public sessions we'll be hosting, if any community group, a Rotary group, a church group is hosting a meeting, I would like county staff to come and present on the draft plan and receive feedback. We're happy to attend. So certainly any work you can do promoting this, uh, within your constituencies would be much appreciated. In addition to these sessions, of course, myself, Randy and Scott have been attending various meetings already and are, are taking feedback really, uh, and welcoming it from anyone who's able to provide it. Um, and the last update on the plan itself is that on the technical side, since the initial climate change action plan modeling and analysis was undertaken, there has been a county growth management update. And so we're going to be integrating those new growth numbers into the analysis to make sure that the climate work best reflects what we now know about projected growth within the county. Additionally, given the latest U N climate change report and the identification of really code red for humanity uh, and the initial public feedback that we've been receiving on the draft, we're also analyzing what level of ambition would be needed to achieve a net zero emissions target. Uh, a net zero emissions target would align with the international science and also the Canadian federal, uh, legislated G H G reduction targets that were adopted in June of this year. So of course, once both of those two updates to the analysis have been completed, we'll be reporting back to the Climate Change Task Force and ultimately council, uh, with an update on both the analysis and the public consultation and engagement that's currently underway. So lots of work, uh, happening and still to come, but thank you very much. And I'm, uh, I'm sure I'll be speaking to you again on the climate issue.
Thank you very much, Linda, and, uh, glad to have you on board. And I know I've had the opportunity to do a little bit of work with you. And, uh, very, very glad to have you. Uh, questions from anyone? Counselor Mackey?
Thanks, Mr. Warden, and, and welcome, Linda. Uh, I think at our redevelopment, I heard net zero again and then redevelopment of our future long-term care home. Are you able to provide, well, me and hopefully other members of council with more on what net zero is and what the prospective cost increases for projects may be to, you know, achieve net zero? I just not clear on, on how that all comes about. Thanks.
The green button.
Uh, it's such a privilege that this first conversation is happening in person, uh, through the chair. Um, so my understanding is that within the R F P that is being issued, uh, soliciting, uh, proponents for the net zero, for the long-term care home redevelopment, there is a net zero feasibility requirement that's being requested. And part of that net zero feasibility analysis is a costing study. So to provide you with exactly the answer you've asked for, which is what's the upfront investment that would be needed to reduce emissions? And what would be the total lifetime cost savings or benefit, you know, the benefits or costs of making that initial upfront um, investment? So, uh, recently, uh, the federal government released some funding that required net zero, uh, for community buildings. Uh, and they use the Canadian Green Building Council standard of a zero emissions building. Uh, so often the kind of interventions that you would need for a building to achieve a zero emission standard would be insulation, triple plane windows, um, and you're probably looking at an electric heat source using an efficient heat pump.
Sorry, I'm just going to stop you. You need, they can't hear you. Yeah.
Sorry. Thank you, Linda. I appreciate that. I guess, you know, one of the challenges is going to be, you know, getting off of, uh, natural gas as a heat source and just the cost of, uh, you know, heating our homes with electricity. You know, something's going to have to change, I think, for, for us to achieve that. So, I mean, it's just a common thing.
Thank you again for the update. Okay, move along. We're on to item number ten now. Are there any notices of motion? Counselor Desai?
I'd just like to say that I'm glad the previous item didn't get too heated. Everyone's a critic. So this is with regards to, um, item three A. I'd spoken with the clerk, um, shortly following the last meeting, uh, to discuss that. And, uh, the clerk and I had come to an agreement and the clerk had proposed some beautiful words for me to use, which I forgot to make note of. And, um, I was hoping the clerk would be kind enough to help me on that notice of motion, uh, which I'm bringing forward today. Uh, and we can discuss at the next, uh, meeting. Thank you.
So through you, Mr. Warden, just a general overview, um, just a governance review. Thank you.
There's the fancy words you were looking for. Okay, any other, uh, notices of motion? Seeing none, then I will look for a motion to adjourn. My counsel Burley, and seconded by Counselor Desai. Sorry, Counselor Mill. All those in favor? Are you opposed? That's Carrie. Thank you very much. We are adjourned.